I need you close, you've been the one one. What if you want mine? It don't matter anyway. I like you so sad. I like you one time. You make my heart stop. You make me and me less hard. Got to quit my job. When they take it, that's just how you got it through. I'ma take it, that's what I could call it. Ooh. Timing boy, why you so shiny? Timing boy, go get behind me, woody. Timing boy, your eyes so blinding. Blinding. Baby, if it's only tell me, am I saying too much? And baby, if it's only tell me, am I saying too much? Baby, if it's only just tell me, am I doing too much? Hey y'all, welcome back to my channel. If you are not new here, hey girl, hey. If you are new here, make sure you like, comment, and subscribe. We're gonna love it, love it, love it here. Um, as you guys can see, I'm currently in a garage. I started filming for y'all yesterday, but I haven't talked to y'all. So I wanted to give y'all a proper intro. We are about to head into Sephora, so let's go. Alright y'all, I ended up coming into Aritzia first because they were having a sale. So I'm gonna show you guys. Dressing trial on. And she goes out there. But this type of color is more like a personal color. You can still like those very much. Let me show you guys the dress. She's alright. Maybe it's my hair. Kind of not really felt great. Y'all, we are on Denessa Myricks. I have a C 7.5. Oh, that's... Oh, this says 1.5. I'm not seeing what 7 looks like. 7 is a little darker. I'm getting a foundation a little darker because it's summer time and you know, you get your little skin. Ooh, this might be too dark. We might go 7. We'll just go shade darker. Thank you. 7. We're gonna get this one. So I think if I tan, I won't tan too, too crazy. Where this will be a good balance and I can mix the two. I actually have it on right now. Very seamless. So we're gonna get this, this Sephora. I always show you guys this. I'm getting this and the Denessa Myricks Yummy Skin. We'll go with that. Yeah, secured the bag in Sephora and now I'm about to go into Aloe. I've been to Aloe a few times and I haven't just found anything that I really wanted to try or wear yet. But they have some cute pieces, so we're gonna see what it's giving today while we're in here. Alright y'all, we're in Aloe now and these are Sephora. Definitely want to see which set I'm gonna like the best. If I go a size bigger, it kinda like looks too long, so this one will probably be a no. Alright y'all, this is the first black set. This is it in black. Very cute. I like the black on black and I like that it's a little different than like the white and the other ones that the girls wear. The only difference that I don't know is like, this is like a true bra. So I think this would be better to wear like with a jacket or have something over it. I think would be obviously ideal unless you're going to the gym and you're like comfortable wearing this like that. But I think this is cute. It's a cute set and I like it in the black. Next, I'm gonna try it on the dark blue. Okay, and here is it in the blue. Which one am I feeling more? I think the blue is cute, but I think that the black will be more practical of wearing it a lot. But obviously, they look very, very similar, like youth mask, but this almost looks, this almost looks like it's probably blue. But I think I'm gonna go with the black set. Bag secured. Uh, we're trying this new pizza spot inside of the Prudential Center. And we're gonna see what it's hitting for. Now we are up at the top of View Boston. Since we were in here, we just decided to come in here and get us a little drink and look at the view. This top vibe. We got our drink, y'all. I showed you guys. Got our drink, y'all. I showed you guys a little bit of it, but... 10 out of 10. She's a passion fruit. Tequila drink, something like that. It's so good. And the view is immaculate. Pretty. See the whole skyline from right here? Hey y'all, um, I feel like I haven't talked to you guys in a little minute, little momento. Um, we are about to go downstairs and study. We have a quiz that takes place tomorrow. Just came back from vacay and if you haven't watched that vlog, go watch that. I posted, that vlog will be posted before this vlog comes out. Um, but yeah, I wanted to come here and talk to y'all. Because before we get into the study session, I realized on my, a few vlogs ago, some people wanted to see like the type of work I do. I do highly recommend for you to watch any of my previous nursing school vlogs from like a few months ago. Um, I'm in my last semester, so a lot of the work that we're doing are like writing papers, discussion posts, and prepping for the NCLEX. So it's not as much studying for tests as I was before. So like farm, mental health, all of that, you could find that in my previous vlogs. If you want like specific type of work that I've done and if you wanna see any of the resources I use. You guys know I use my nursing school bundle. Um, I use the Nursing and Making flashcards. Those are very helpful. I highly recommend them. Um, and yeah, just to put that disclaimer out there before we get to studying. But I wanted to show you guys something. Dear, I had a sunglass sale and I bought some more Lorave shade. Let me show y'all what they look like. Um, these are from an old collection. Um, oh, this is so cute. Dear Lorave babe, thanks a ton for choosing Lorave. You just made our day brighter and yours a little more stylish. We are here to help you express your vibe, your style, and your confidence, all while keeping you shaded in top tier quality. Not gonna read this whole thing, but this note is very, very cute. I don't remember what collection, I don't remember what collection these are from, but these are New Era Midnight. Um, the midnight color, I think came out obviously after the new era in like that little beige color. So the beige was sold out where I would have gotten that. So I got them in black. And y'all know I love me some Lorave shades. Like I'm a faithful, I almost own every glasses in the collection. I'm not gonna lie to you. In each collection, no cap. Let's see these. Ooh, cute. Very midnight, very like mysterious. Let's hope I like them. I might not like them with the hair that I have right now, but let's see what it's giving. I don't know if I like them with the braids. Oh, no, 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 they're not bad at all, actually. They're cute. Let me see my phone. Okay, these are tea. Y'all know I wear my, um, other ones. I cannot think of the name of them right now. Y'all know the ones that I always wear. I wear my blue shaded ones and my yellow shaded ones. But these are cute to have some like all black Loraves super tea. So I wanted to show you guys that before I get to my study session, cuz these are super cute. Wait for the summertime. Yeah, y'all, we're about to go downstairs and study and do some work because like I said, I came back from vacay and I ain't did nothing. So let's get to it. Okay, so y'all know I use my, I know I use my iPad for everything, like my notes, digital, planning, all of that stuff, so... Before I get started, you guys, I need to charge this first of all. Let me show you guys the nursing school bundle that I use. This might seem redundant if you've been here before, but I have a lot of new viewers and a lot of new subscribers cuz we finally hit 4K. So, um, I wanna make sure everybody has, you know, all the trinkets, all the trinkets and all the things. What bundle that I use? Um, I got it off of Etsy. Um, it literally has everything you can imagine. This is the table of contents. Um, for instance, if I went over here and I pressed cardiac, it's a whole cardiac module. It goes over the cardiac system overview and it goes over the specific things that you need. Like for instance, if you are learning about coronary artery disease, they have the signs and symptoms, diagnostics, risk factors, treatments, and patient education on this. I would highly recommend looking for like a nursing school bundle, something you can use that will help you as a guide for your exams along with like whatever material your school gives you, whether that's PowerPoints, a study guide, and things like that, so... I just wanted to show that resource. Um, I don't have my cards on me right now, but like I said, they're from Nursing and Making and you can go online and you can purchase those. I don't have a coupon code or nothing like that cuz you know, I'm not plugged in, but I would highly recommend them. She does do sales sometimes, so catch her when she does like a sale and you can get them for a better price. So yeah, let's get to studying for this quiz. So right now I have a discussion post and it is on National Patient Safety Goals. I'm going to redo the rubric and there's a PowerPoint in here. That's 17 minutes that I'm about to sit here and watch so I can answer the discussion post. But this is just showing you an example of like work that I have. Um, I have to watch this video and then answer the question for the discussion post that the professor has deemed necessary. So this is, it's a prompt reflecting on National Patient Safety Goals. Discuss how adherence of... What I was trying to say was, um, it says that we have to reflect and discuss how adherence to these standards enhance the quality of patient care in various healthcare settings. I have to share personal experiences or insights of how these goals influence nursing practice and contribute to improve patient outcomes. So that's the prompt. I'm about to watch this and then I'm going to work on it, the discussion post.
...infection, identify patient safety risks such as ulcers, improve healthcare equity, which is new in 2024, specific areas of concern in patient safety. They gather data either is prone to avoidable harm and ensure healthcare organizations adopt best practices to reduce medical... Healthcare organizations globally are focusing on enhancing safety measures. These are the different communities, ambulatory assisted living communities, pediatric health and human services, critical care, home care, etc.
So we have completed the discussion post. Um, all we have to do is respond. It's due this Sunday and I'm not sure if we have to respond to a student. It doesn't specify that we have to, so I may be done with this for the week. So that's something off of my to-do list, which you guys know, I do also use a digital planner, so... Let's go to today's the 10th one here. Um, and then I can go to the week. It's week 28. And I'm gonna write down all the assignments that I have due for this week. Um, I have another discussion post that requires me to respond to a group, we're working on a case study. And then I have the Q7 bank Kaplan, Kaplan stuff to do and I have another discussion post. I'm gonna get started on some of the work I have this upcoming week because we're writing our Kaplan paper and I wanna, you know, get that done as early as possible. Because we really only have a few weeks of school left. Like, well, let me not be dramatic. We have like a month left, actually. Yeah, so, yeah. I'm just trying to get everything done that I need to get done, so I don't have to worry about anything. And I forgot to tell you guys, it's fake. I finished my pre-supership, had my last 12 hour shift and yeah, it went well. I'm finally done with that, so it was like my last clinical nursing school, so I'm so happy. I'm done, I can focus more on the work and like capstone that we have to do and you know, just finishing strong for this semester, so I'm gonna keep working. I'm probably about to, like I said, study for this quiz that we have tomorrow. I'm gonna look over the modules. It's going to modules on for public health and yeah, that's where I'm about to go. Which ones do I want? These are so pretty. Cooking today, y'all, so we're about to get some chicken wings and some chicken thighs. I'm gonna put them on the grill. What? A pound of both. Sounds good, y'all, bro. And we're gonna make some mac and cheese. Yeah. Cooking today, y'all, so we're about to... No, you was good with it. The chicken is seasoned, y'all. Chicken is seasoned. Here we have the hot dogs and for the mac and cheese. I'm like eat it up, eat, eat it up, eat, eat it up. The food, oh, hold on. The food is done, y'all. Hot dog, chicken, and mac and cheese. Hey y'all, it is a lot while later. We are currently in my little study area, post-gym. I didn't show you guys yesterday. I also went to the gym and walked around a track, but I didn't film that, but I did show you guys us going to the sweat house, which was a 10 out of 10. That was my first time going. I definitely wanna go back and do it again. Um, I think it's great post-workout recovery, so hopefully I can look into doing that a little bit more often. But like I said, we are in our study area. Um, we have some work to do. We have two group assignments this week. Well, one is our capstone paper that we're working on and then we're doing a case study for my ethics course and I'm gonna be working on the PowerPoint for that, so... We're about to get started. Let's see. I also in between editing this vlog, so um, if I have enough time after I get my work done, I do wanna work on editing everything from like yesterday into... So I can have this vlog out to you guys by Sunday. Today is the 15th, so let's hope that your girl can get all the things done that she needs to do. Um, I believe I told you guys, I'm done with my pre-supership, so I'm officially done with clinical for this semester and for nursing school period, so I can 100% focus on my work. And literally yesterday is a month until the semester is over. No. Yeah, pretty much a month. So now 29 days till semester is officially over, so I'm excited, but there is still work to be done. I also have a simulation that we are doing on Friday. I think I'm gonna try to take you guys and record and show how that is. Um, I'm gonna try my best. I really don't like recording at school, but I will try my best for y'all to get a little bit of content, so we'll see. Um, yeah, so I'm about to work on our PowerPoint presentation for my group. And I also need to go back and look at the paper that we're writing and see if any of my other group members have started working on it. Hopefully so, um... Do some stuff, so hopefully it doesn't look like anybody else has started writing anything for it. But I'm gonna hope and pray that they do because it's due on Sunday. That's all I can say. That's all I can say. This PowerPoint and summary that we're doing is due on Thursday, so that's why I'm doing it today. It's back to what I was saying. Um, this is the summary that we have done. One of my group... Back to what I was saying. Um, this is the summary that we have done. One of my group members have completed the summary. For the case study, to show other group members' names, of course, to keep that confidential for them, but someone's already started working on it, so that's perfect. I'm currently the group leader for this one, so I'm gonna work on completing all of the empty slides that are on here so we can get it done. And it can be done ahead of time, so we can turn it in. We have till 11:59 on Thursday, but if we can get it done faster than that, then I don't see the problem. This is the last case study that my group has to do for the semester, so once I'm done with this, that's another thing off my to-do list. Speaking of that, I did wanna plan because I feel like I've been slacking with my planner. And y'all know I'm big on digital planning, um, so I'm gonna get back into that and make it more, you know, intentional. Because I have been, you know, slacking. I'll just, you know, go by my day and do whatever I need to do, but I really do like having my planner and writing everything down. Um, so we're actually gonna interlude and do that, so I can have like a schedule of the things that I need to get done and I could check them off, so I know that they're complete. So this is like the weekly outline for the planner that I have. Um, this just shows the individual days. Obviously, today is the 15th, but I can specifically press on this day and plan my day specifically here. So that's what I'm gonna do for today. The focus is to get my assignments... Done. And my top three priorities are the PowerPoint... Capstone paper, edition, paperwork. Those are really the top things that I have on my to-do list today. So let's write down individually on this side, you can write down your entire to-do list, just so you can write down specific things that you need to do. So I'm gonna use a different font and ooh, it's acting a little wonky with me today. We are also going to write more paragraphs... For our capstone essay, cuz that's due on Sunday as well. And I'm going to look over formulation. There we go. Those are the top three things that I need to do. If there's anything else that I need to add to this to-do list, I will do so. I also like to do little notes, so I have stickers on here as well. These, um, for instance, I have this one that'll be like, say at a test, I can add test on there and I could put that as one of my to-do list things, you know? I have things like that to do. Um, but I like to write myself good little notes, so it says, "Give yourself time." So I can just add that to my notes. I'll just do that for now to keep it basic and not drag it out, but this is my daily planner for today. So these are the tasks that we are going to try to get done. So I'm about to pretty much take the notes that we have on another Word doc and add those notes into the PowerPoint. And I'm not gonna talk y'all through that. I'm just gonna show you guys, so enjoy this little beat roll of me doing my work. Okay, so I just finished the reference list for the PowerPoint presentation. I believe we're done. I'm gonna email my group and let them know I finished it, so they can look over it and add or take anything out that they need to. And then I'll be good to submit on my end whenever they are ready to submit. Um, I, we have to submit the summary and the case studies, so the PowerPoint to the case study. So I'm actually gonna email them now and make sure they can look over it. And our summary looks good, so we are probably done. We are done. Oh, I sent this to one person. Let me actually forward this to her. Um, but yeah, I've literally finished this, so that's good. Teamwork makes the dream work. I love when we get in a group and everybody just does their part. I love that. I love that. It just makes everyone's life a whole lot easier. Because if we're being honest, I really don't like group work. I'd rather just get it done by myself. But, um. I think we did good. And we have nothing to worry about, so. That should be fine. Okay. So I'm done with that, I'm now about to go look over the paper that we have to do. And try to get that as much done as possible, I'm not gonna do too much, I literally already wrote like. On two of the sections already. Um, for the references that I found, so I'm just gonna go in there, add some things if I need to. Um, and yeah. We're gonna, I like to have stuff done, because, um, like I said, we do have a simulation on Friday, so I need to look over that work. So I can check off my to-do list, the PowerPoint, since we completed that. Um, and then now I'm gonna look over my paragraphs, like I said, and then I think they responded. I don't know, my final clinical hours got graded. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, 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 yes. Love that. A hundred and twenty-six hours completed, thank you, thank you, thank you. But yeah, back to checking this off, we completed that, I'm gonna look over these paragraphs and then we're gonna look over the info for the simulation. Alright, y'all, I wrote a little bit more for the capstone paper and now I'm gonna look over what we have to do for the simulation. So if, so it seems like we need to be focusing on develop. A discharge plan or care for a child slash toddler, toddler or adolescent who is diagnosed with type one diabetes. We use clinical reasoning to promote a positive outcome for a client who has diabetes mellitus. Um, so that's the topic, eh, I won't read every single little thing, but, um, it seems like we're focusing on diabetes. So I'm gonna actually go to. iPad's gonna die, need to plug it in. Diabetes mellitus is right here, for type one, so I'm gonna actually save this page so I can have it readily available on. Friday when we're doing the simulation as something I can look back on. It seems like we're gonna be working, working with the pharmacy school and collaborating with them when we do the simulations, so it should be pretty interesting. Um. See, I'm just looking over this, it says see diabetes education checklist. Hmm. Yeah, it seems like we're focusing more on the child, so this obviously diabetes one, type one is. Um, diagnosed in childhood, so just using that. Being mindful of that and knowing how you're supposed to be speaking directly to a. Alright, y'all, I wrote a little bit more for the capstone paper and now I'm gonna look over what we have to do for the simulation. So if, so it seems like we need to be focusing on develop. A discharge plan or care for a child slash toddler, toddler or adolescent who is diagnosed with type one diabetes. We use clinical reasoning to promote a positive outcome for a client who has diabetes mellitus. Um, so that's the topic, eh, I won't read every single little thing, but, um, it seems like we're focusing on diabetes. So I'm gonna actually go to. iPad's gonna die, need to plug it in. I'm going to close up all my tabs first and I'm going to go on my good notes. And go to the. Hey, y'all, it is a lot while later, as you can see, I am changed and closed. We are headed to the Indiana Fever versus the Connecticut Suns, I think that's the name of the team, we're going to that game. Um, and I brought my camera into TD Garden before and it was on, but this time I'm just not gonna do it, just so I don't have to worry about anything else carrying around. I'll probably just film whatever little things on my phone, but this is the fit, we are wearing these. Whole fit is from Primark, actually, just wearing these track pants in red with the white line, my black and white Asics. The top is also from Primark as well, and I'm just wearing my hair down with the light beat and same jewelry. So we are about to head out and go, y'all, so I will see y'all when we get to the game. Good morning, my people, it is Friday and today we have our quiz. And we also are doing a simulation on campus that I've been talking about this entire time, so I'm actually getting ready to head out. I need to put on some chapstick, baby, cuz these lips are dry. We're getting ready to go to that, our quiz is at ten and then I start my simulation at eleven. And if you could tell, I sound a little like wonky, a little stuffy, and that's because I am, um. Which sucks cuz I hate like having to do things, especially when I already like sound like this, like I sound like I'm sick, but. I really don't feel sick and I don't think I'm sick, I just was sleeping with my fan on, so that's obviously affected my breathing a little bit, but. We are ready, we were told to wear our scrubs today, so that's what I am wearing. Uh, I'm gonna take my laptop and my iPad because we're gonna need it. And hopefully I get there in enough time where I can print some stuff out for the simulation. Later, like I said, I want to try my best to record things of the simulation. Without it being awkward for anybody else, so we'll see what footage I can get and yeah, we'll see you guys when we get there. Alright, y'all, we are post-sim, I didn't get to show you guys as much as I wanted to because it was kinda like all over the place. And yeah, I couldn't really record anything, it was really almost nothing to record. Um, we worked with the pharmacy students via Zoom and we did like discharge planning for pediatric. Patients on insulin and diabetes types, type one. Um, so yeah, that was pretty much the gist of the simulation and now we're done, we're about to go eat some food. Probably won't record anything that we're eating, but. We did get something exciting today and I, sucks I can't really show you guys, but we, we got our pen. Um, I, it says my school on it, so I don't really like wanna show it, but she actually looks really cute. Y'all see that B S N? That B S N, yes, Mia. So yeah, we got our pens today that we ordered, I think I told y'all about me ordering it in like a previous vlog and stuff like that, so. We finally got that, we have twenty-seven days until graduation, so. Yeah, the countdown begins, y'all, but yeah, I wanted to like do a little outro for the simulation, sorry I didn't get to record that much of it, but. Yeah, it is what it is.